I guess we can go ahead and run down the agenda items. First item on the agenda would be the approval of January sixteenth minutes.
A move to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Bills. We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve bills as submitted. Roll call please.
Yes, sir.
Aye.
Will Homic?
Aye.
Otis?
Aye.
Oak? Brett?
Aye. Bills are paid. Financial reports. Any questions for Candy on the financials? I'll move to approve tax reports. We have a motion and a second to approve the financials as submitted. Roll call please.
Oak?
Aye.
Yes, sir.
Aye.
Will Homic?
Aye.
Otis?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye. Financials are approved. Treasurers' checks. We have a motion.
Second.
Second to approve the treasurer's checks. Roll call please.
Otis? Oak?
Aye.
Yes, sir.
Aye. Aye.
Brett?
Aye. Treasurer's checks are paid. Agenda. Anybody have anything additional for the agenda today?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
We have a motion. We have a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favors signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Elizabeth, agricultural values. Good morning. Right in the front there. There you go. Perfect.
Good morning. I just wanted to attend the meeting to provide you with an update on agricultural values for two thousand and twenty four. No decisions are needed to be made today. This is just purely for me to give you some information. Each year, the Tax Commissioner of the State of North Dakota provides tax equalization offices with estimates of the agricultural value per acre. The current value provided to Ramsey County states that our agricultural value for two thousand and twenty four should be set at seven hundred twenty eight dollars and thirty seven cents per acre. We are allowed a ten percent allowance. Our current two thousand and twenty three average value per acre is seven hundred and five dollars and twenty cents. Ron Higgins from the Department of Agribusiness and Applied Economics at North Dakota State University stopped by my office in January. We were able to briefly discuss how each year he takes into consideration three main factors to calculate ag land values. These include production data, the cost of production index, and the capitalization rate. NDSU calculates this information and provides their findings to the state tax commissioner. Most counties in North Dakota have seen a decrease in agricultural value per acre for the two thousand and twenty through two thousand and twenty four assessment. The counties contiguous Ramsey County, which include Nelson, Benson, Towner, Cavalier, and Walsh County saw this decrease. Many factors contribute to this decrease, including the cost of production index. This index was higher this past year, thus contributing to the lower values. With our current agricultural land value of seven oh five twenty being in tolerance, an adjustment would not be needed for two thousand and twenty four. This decision will be voted on by you at the tax equalization meeting that is held the first Tuesday in June. Just wanted to give you that. I think you each received the printout that the state sends our office showing all the counties and what they provided us to be within tolerance to. I need you to try to bring it in when I get the letter so everybody knows kind of what you're looking at come June.
Anybody have any questions for Elizabeth this morning?
Yeah, that's what we're currently sitting at.
Anything else? Not thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mo, welcome.
Hello.
Steve Mo, IT GIS coordinator for the county, talking about some IT grants.
Yes, I applied in September and we received approval for forty thousand dollars, or forty thousand dollar grant with eighty percent covered by the feds and about five percent by the state. So fifteen percent would be the county cost if we, if you would approve this or we are, I guess, it was planned to work for the a network upgrade and see some of the terms that they require have changed since the beginning, but so may take some creative measures to get all of it done, but thank I would have that in my budget, but I guess I just need commission approval to accept the grant.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the for network upgrades, security upgrades that Mr. Mo has applied for. Further discussion? You said some of the criteria changed.
Yeah, I guess they now they won't allow us to drill any new holes or attach anything to the walls or floors, so that kind of eliminates running new wires to places that don't have it and installing a new rack or something on the wall, but so yeah, we may have to come up with a different, or different funds for that sort of thing. Right, yes.
I just want to make sure it wasn't like some condensed timeline or something that had to get done on now or something like that.
Correct. Yeah, it'll be more of a equipment and install.
Further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Appreciate you going through that. Mr. Filson, welcome.
Okay, to start off, we got our semi load of salt from NCS Minerals in Canada. And the price of that was three thousand five hundred ninety eight dollars and forty eight cents. So like to entertain a motion, pay that invoice.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and pay NCS Minerals out of Canada for a load of salt, thirty five ninety eight forty eight. Roll call please.
Will Homic?
Aye.
Otis?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye. Motion carries. Continue, please.
We had our new tractor and snow blower from Butler. If you remember, we expect a one-year-old tractor, but there ended up being only fourteen hours on that one-year-old tractor, so it's virtually new. And the invoice for those two are two hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. So like to entertain a motion and pay for them.
So move. Second. We have motion. We have a second to go ahead and pay Butler equipment for the new tractor and snow blower we ordered. And this has been ordered for quite some time, I think.
Yeah, six months, yep.
So two eighty four fifty would be the amount. Roll call please. Two eighty here. Two eighty, four fifty. Two hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and fifty.
Eight oh on here, eight thirty.
It is two eighty, two hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and fifty.
Okay.
On
Yeah, there's additional bills on here. Okay, just to make sure that's right.
Thanks. Sorry.
No, no problem. Roll call please.
Yes, sir.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries.
Also, Wang's did get our truck plow hitch all put back together and repaired, so the invoice on that was eight thousand six hundred and seventy five dollars, so like to entertain a motion to pay that invoice.
Second. Motion and a second to go ahead and pay Wang's repair for the truck and plow hitch invoices, eighty six seventy five. Roll call please.
Oak?
Aye.
Yes, sir.
Aye.
Will Homic?
Aye.
Otis?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye. Motion carries.
Also, Clement's Root did get Clement's Root Plumbing and Heating, did get the furnace in the new Cray shop. And the invoice was exactly what they had quoted us for two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars and like to entertain a motion to pay that.
So move. Second. We have a motion and a second to go ahead and pay the invoice to Clement's Root Plumbing and Heating. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Otis? Oak?
Aye.
Guessner?
Aye.
Will Homic?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye. Motion carries.
Also, we have a bill from the DOT for our share of the bridge inspections that were done last fall. These were actually the underwater inspections that they did for us. So our percentage share is three thousand five hundred and seventy two dollars and forty three cents.
You know how many bridges that was?
There was two. I think it's an eighty twenty or eighty twenty split. We paid the twenty.
So move to pay the thirty five seventy two forty three.
Second. Motion and a second to go ahead and pay NDSU Department of Transportation for Bridge Inspections, thirty five seventy two forty three. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Will Homic?
Aye.
Oak?
Aye.
Otis?
Aye.
Guessner?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye. Motion passes.
Okay, and along with that invoice, the state is asking for where we got our local mats from. It's a signature page that the auditor and the chairman has to sign. So I'm looking for a motion to have the auditor and the chairman sign that signature page.
So move. Second. Motion and a second to go ahead to have auditor and chairman sign that matching, worth matching funds came from for the DOT invoice. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, and we got another invoice from the DOT for our share of the engineering on the box culvert that was finished on Ramsey County Four or installed on Ramsey County Four. That was also eighty, eighty twenty split. So our share is five thousand eight hundred ninety three dollars and three cents. So looking for a motion to pay that.
Okay, we took the last.
That bridge isn't quite done yet. We still gotta pave, so that's probably not the last bill we'll see on that particular project.
So move. Second. We have a motion and a second to go ahead and pay DOT for our share of our engineering on the Box Culvert project on Ramsey Four invoices, eight thousand five hundred, or eight thou, five thousand eight hundred ninety three oh three, five eight nine three oh three. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Oak?
Aye.
Guessner?
Aye.
Will Homic?
Aye.
Otis? Brett?
Aye. Motion passes.
Okay, and then we met with both, the state for both townships that were awarded grants. The state wants us to act as the bank, basically. All the invoices will run through us. Eventually, we'll have to sign some sort of agreement to that effect. I haven't seen that paperwork yet, but just so you're aware, it's almost a million dollars for those two townships that we have to pay the bills for. And then we turn them in for reimbursement, and there's like a two or a three week turnaround before we get our money back. They're a hundred percent grants, so.
Just match money out, money in.
Right, exactly. I talked to Candy about it. I think we have figured out how we're gonna do it, but just so you guys are aware that that's gonna be going on. And eventually, we will have to sign some sort of contract with the state saying that we agree to, agree to do this. That's a rare, I mean, this is, no, it's not normal. I mean, it's happened before, but it's rare.
They just don't wanna ram around the project there?
Well, they're concerned about how the money will get paid. Like if they were to let the township pay for the invoice, they probably don't have that kind of money in their accounts either. So they don't know how they would pay the contractor to get reimbursement. That's the thing is they want the contractor paid first with proof that you paid them before they'll, yeah, the state does, before they'll reimburse the money. That's their way of proving that it was paid. Yeah, any more questions? I think we haven't figured out how we'll do it, but just so you're aware, that's going on. It's gonna be a big sum of money there for a couple, three weeks, a month.
Not like a whole million dollars come to all times.
Correct. Right.
We just have to keep track of the
Yeah.
What's sent, what came back, like make sure we got it all.
Hopefully, or two to three weeks is
Yeah, that's very, very good. Yeah, very good point because there's short help out there too, yeah. But that's what they told us at the meeting, that it would be a two to three week turnaround, which I'm sure they're
So this is a paid project then?
Yeah, the one in Self and Walkin is nine hundred thousand or something like, roughly. So yeah, I mean, let's just assume the contractor got it done in two weeks, which probably won't happen, but then his bill would be the total nine hundred thousand. So we'll probably have two invoices from the contractor, you know, half each time. I'm guessing because he'll be able to work that fast.
They really don't have a choice, otherwise they don't have the question to do.
Yeah, if we don't, if we don't agree to it, then they won't get their grant, right?
Correct. Either bank, I guess.
When we sign the contract, I'll ask for a motion then, but just so you're aware that this is going on. The contract will be coming from the state later on.
Yeah, we'd like to see that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Midcoata Power Cooperative has filled out an approach, submit for an approach for the substation four miles south of Hampden on Ramsey Three. The approach is already there. They had installed it already as a temporary approach, so they could get transformers in there. They need to get a big crane in. And now that that is all finished, they're thinking that maybe future maintenance might be an issue, so they'd like to leave the approach there. They did a really good job of putting that approach in. It's, you know, safe side slopes and everything, so I don't there is a culvert there. Plenty, plenty big enough. And end sections seeded, everything. So I mean, it's, they're doing it right. So I guess I'm just looking for approval for that permanent approach.
So move. We have motion and a second to go ahead and allow the temporary approach four miles south of Hampden on Ramsey Three from Midcoata Power. From temporary to a permanent?
Correct.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, and then the last thing I have is the equipment that we were trying to sell. I'm thinking on maybe having a online type auction, maybe get some better money, and then Candy and the rest of the people here won't have to mess around with it. It will be done by a auctioneering firm or somebody. We'll have to pay our percentage of the sale, but it'll be a lot less work for everybody here. Plus, I'm thinking we'll get better, more money for our stuff. So just refresh my memory on what that is. We got like some gravel truck and a farm tractor. And the rest is stuff that we haven't used, like an asphalt machine is out there, little tiny steel face roller. What else is out there? Smaller farm tractor. We had earlier declared a surplus. That was probably three, four months ago that we had already surplus. Now that the snow has gone, it might, they're all sitting there. It might be a good time for somebody to take pictures as well.
Yeah.
So just looking for your approval to go that route rather than have an auction here in this room.
So move. Second. We have a motion and a second to go ahead and allow the highway department to put the surplus equipment on an online auction. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
That's all I have. Must have something for me. No?
Anybody, you have anything for Kevin? Congratulations. Yeah, great job. I appreciate you guys' hard work. Thank you. Chris, you wanna run over and ask the water board to pop in, please? Thank you. I think Dwayne had a few updates for us. And then we'll get on the sheriff Wang. Thank you.
Perfect. Wow, okay. Well, we finished with our audit report and and we were suggested to go to a local accounting firm to do some setups, and they've come over and looked at the books and what we've been doing. And they're very satisfied, and they said if we have any problems or anything, they're gladly come over. And they'll once a year come over and review all of our transactions. And then at nine thirty this morning, we're meeting with Cavalier. Water board down here, and we're gonna go over grain ten that we're trying to get up for a boat, so that's about what all we got going. I mean, we got other stuff, but minor things.
Any questions? Any questions for Dwayne?
Okay, see you in a minute.
Yep, appreciate you coming in. Sheriff Wang.
Good morning. What I'm here for today is I got two bids for new vehicles. For the sheriff's department, Chevy for the Tahos. We didn't get a bid from them. They couldn't even order until July. So I kinda took them out of the equation, and they even said they didn't know if they could get the Tahos because they're in such high demand. So I got prices on Ford Expedition and the Dodge Durangos. The Expeditions come in at fifty two thousand eight hundred and eighty six dollars, or the Dodge Durango's come in at forty three thousand four hundred and seven dollars a unit. My recommendation, what I'm asking for is approval to purchase two Dodge Durangos. And that it can go with our fleet. That's what we currently have been running, so. And we've had good success with them.
Didn't you just say you had a blown engine on one last meeting?
Yes. But I mean, for all the vehicles that we go through and everything, I know it's covered under warranties, so.
Oh, okay. So this updates all the vehicles? This isn't gonna be like next year, you need two more?
Yeah, we'll need two more next year. Just because they're rotating now. Most of these are gonna be four to five-year-old cars. They got a hundred and forty thousand miles, if not more.
And then we're gonna auction those off or what's the plan on that? For trade-in?
We trade in or we keep them back for spares?
This is with no trade-in, right?
No trade-in with these.
Does any of the add-on equipment transfer over, or is that something that with the older vehicles doesn't transfer to the newer ones like the?
Most of the stuff will transfer over. What I found out with this Dodge Durango, they changed the cabin style a little bit, so my cages aren't gonna work. So I'm gonna get stuck by new cages.
And this was all in your two thousand and twenty four budget for this year?
That's correct.
Yep. Looking for a motion to approve the purchase of two Dodge Durangos for forty three, four oh seven per vehicle? Anybody wanna entertain that motion? So move. Second. We have a motion. We have a second to go ahead and allow Sheriff Wang to go ahead with the purchase of those two vehicles. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
I guess that's all I had for you unless you got something for me.
No. Anybody have anything for Sheriff Wang? Continue the great work. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Unfinished business. Floodplain Administration. Mr. Jager, you have any thing you'd like to add? We do have that meeting with the township scheduled for Monday, is it? Monday, the twelfth, ten AM. Yep. And those resolutions have gone out to all townships and looking for their cooperation in signing those. So it's imperative that they either do that or at least show up at the meeting on Monday to discuss that, get more information from a state FEMA director, I think. Is Tyler gonna be here? Or he's supposed to be here. Or at least, if at least nothing else, it'll be virtual, I'm sure. Or at at least not, if at least nothing else, uh be virtual, I'm sure, yeah, so um. Daniel, I know you and uh Bo have been working on the resolutions for the townships. And uh do you have anything you'd like to add?
Not at this time, uh. As every bit, well, as you may or may not be aware, I recently just joined the state's attorney's office and so. I'm starting to take a point on these things and I'm familiarizing myself, I just sat down with Mister Jager uh yesterday. To get some information just firsthand and uh I'm digging in to see what can be done for that situation, other than what is already being done.
Like drinking from a fire hose, isn't it?
Certainly is.
Well, thank, thank you. Anything else that you can think of, Chris? Uh, anybody else, uh commissioners have any questions regarding that?
So township that has chose not to, they still should come?
Have they signed the resolution?
I don't know that, but I think they have.
Okay, well, if they're available, they can come, um, we'd certainly appreciate. You know, the more participation, the better, but um and maybe they have the opportunity to change their mind once they hear. Um, all the information being presented, so. No, go ahead. Yep. And I know this uh land use author- authorization uh township. Who um who will be discussed again at the legislative level. It's currently going through an interim study, that interim committee meets Tuesday. In Bismarck, and I know this is part of their agenda that they will be discussing on Tuesday at Bismarck on the thirteenth. So I haven't seen their full list of agenda yet, but. If anybody wants to go online and listen to some of the the testimony presented in the previous two meetings that this committee has had, it's available. At uh and E dot ledge dot gov, I think, or ledge dot M D dot gov. It's underneath the legislative um branch of the North Dakota State website and then uh interim committees, it's. Ink and natural resources, I think, is the committee that's doing this study, so. Anybody has any questions, uh, reach out to Chris. Hearing nothing else, we'll continue moving on. Uh, new business, approve of abatement list, and there is a plethora of abatements that have been filed. And Candy had put those out in a. Spreadsheet format instead of each individual. One, and so those are part of the uh. The treasures checks that we received or we approved earlier was these uh credits that have been. For part of these abatements. I'll move to proof of the abatements. We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the abatements as listed. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, oppose same sign, motion carries. And tho- those lists continue to grow on a daily basis, I think um. Did Lisa say they have an opportunity to go through the thirty first of March? She did want to indicate that um since this is a reimbursement to the county from the state. That some of our political subdivisions, especially the ones with the larger. Receiving tax dollars such as Devil's Lake Public Schools, may be waiting. Um, for some of their funds until this is reimbursed from the state and so.
But there's nothing you can do about that.
Right, June she was thinking?
I mean if.
Yep.
I mean, if they're.
Right.
If they apply for it and they get it.
Yep.
It's legit, it's legit.
Yep, so. I know the treasurer just wanted to make political subs aware of that situation. So if they're short of money, this is.
Part.
Part of it, yep. Okay. Abatements have been approved. Moving on, uh, county commission conference. Um, North Dakota County Commission Association is having a summer summit on March twentieth. Um, with a welcome social gathering the evening of the nineteenth. That is at the Bismarck Ramada Hotel and if people took a look at that agenda, it looks like some very valuable information for us county commissioners. It's always good to network with your fellow peers from across the state. See what's working in their county and see what's maybe not working in in some of their counties. And we can share some of our experiences. I did go ahead and I registered myself if others have interest in that. But one of the things that I'd like to bring up with that is um. Potentially not having a second March meeting. Because we're scheduled to meet Tuesday, the nineteenth, um, so if you're heading down to Bismarck to attend that conference. If we would be short of that meeting, that's usually a pretty light meeting anyway, but if we give it out far enough in advance. Departments public uh can make sure that they have all their stuff to us for March at our first meeting. That month instead of waiting till the second one. And Candy's gonna be gone as well that week, so it really worked out well. Not sure uh why the county commission association schedules things for a. A Tuesday, knowing that most county commissions meet on Tuesdays, but um. Nonetheless, I think the Wednesday agenda looks really beneficial for a lot of really good information for commissioners. So with that, I would like to maybe hear a recommendation or a motion from the board to. Not have a second meeting in March. Motion and a second, further discussion. Questions about that conference?
What is the deadline for registering?
I think it's, they would uh probably accept that, you know, anytime, um.
We can let you know Candy or? Would you rather have us go on and do it? Says that your county will be built fifty for registration, so it must be directed.
The Association of County Commissioners.
But that's.
That's just for the conference.
Yeah, that's not the um hotel.
Yeah, it doesn't say the, if there's a deadline. And it does compile or comply with North Dakota Central Code Code uh regarding forums. No need for a public notice if county commissioners plan to attend. So we're covered that way. Did we vote on it? Any further discussion on the conference? So bypassing or canceling the second meeting in March to allow commissioners the opportunity to attend. I did uh talk to Starr at the L E C as well, because twentieth is the L E C meeting, we're gonna change that date uh for the. And so uh without further discussion, we'll uh go ahead, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose same sign, second meeting in March is canceled. Law enforcement, uh Lake Region Law Enforcement, J P A, so we've gotten some. Minor changes with J P A as. From the last time we've approved it. And I don't think there was anything in there that we couldn't live with, um, had a discussion with Bo. Yesterday on this, um. And I'm not sure if any of the other commissioners have any issues with anything that was listed in there. Uh, some of the things that were highlighted within that was the um. And the appointing of. County representatives to that. And I think it's. Under page three. Apart from L R L E C directors, all representatives serving on a board shall be required to serve as a duly elected commissioner. In their respective governing body. And so the L E C's attorney, uh Mister Swanson was stating that, well, what if a commissioner vacates their position? Mid-election and we have to appoint somebody that isn't duly elected.
And uh. Why would they appoint, would we just let somebody else take the lead from the commission?
Uh, certainly could, you know, whether or not that, you know, and and I think Howard's argument was that. You know, what if we appointed somebody that was appointed to the commission or um. Whether it be a city or the county uh to fill a vacant position. And so. Was the highlighted stuff eliminated, Daniel, or was it kept in?
So you're probably looking at a black and white copy, uh, there are multiple different kinds of highlights, some are in red, some are green, some are purple. The changes that were received from the city of Devil's Lake are generally grammatical and syntax issues that they identified. My understanding is most of what is in green and what was added was what was already approved by this board. And so the additions or changes made by the city are simply. Non-sub- substantive changes. Unless anybody identified something entirely new that uh they did not see before, uh uh there are no substantive changes from.
Do you want to go ahead and um approve the changes within the J P A of the law enforcement center? Uh, we will meet one more time this month prior to the L E C meeting, but I would certainly like to get this. Knocked off our agenda, both at the county level and the L E C level. Uh, sooner we can go ahead and approve our portion of it, the other entities can approve it within their own governing bodies. And then get that to the, to the L E C for their final approval, yeah, and it shouldn't go beyond the. The next meeting of the L E C, which is. Nineteenth of February. I didn't see anything that we have discussed one more, so I looking to approve. We have motion, do we have a second? Have a second to go ahead and approve the joint powers agreement as amended, um. Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, oppose same sign. Motion approved. Thank you. Opioid lawsuit claim, Daniel.
Thank you, Jeff. I'm not quite sure uh how familiar everybody is with the opioid lawsuit claim uh that Ramsey County has. Uh, contracted with the, let's see. I I'm not gonna be able to pronounce that Nakawati Law Group, they are the uh legal representation for the county as it relates to the. To the opioid lawsuit. Currently, uh, they are, they're sent, they're essentially just managing the payments coming in from these pharmacies. The issue for the commission today is uh one of the named. Uh pharmacies or businesses as part of this lawsuit is Kroger uh grocery stores and pharmacies. That is a, it's a chain down south, I'm from Texas, it's a big chain down there, but. There are no Kroger stores or um subsidiaries of any sort anywhere near North Dakota. Or in any of the neighboring states, and so the recommendation from the uh. Group representing the county in this situation is recommending that we release Kroger from at least our. Uh, part in the lawsuit, essentially, essentially indemnifying Kroger from any payments made to Ramsey County. For more detail, it is less than two percent of any. Damages that may be attributed to Ramsey County or to North Dakota generally. Uh, so the recommendation is to release Kroger, we we don't receive any payments from them, we receive. Subs, I mean, small amounts as far as the county's concerned, for instance, Walmart pays, will be paying uh. This month, three thousand three hundred and nine dollars ninety three cents, Walgreens will pay one thousand two hundred and ninety dollars and fifty four cents. Walgreens, that will be their first payment, Walgreens will make a second payment of eight hundred and fifty one dollars and eighty four cents, and C V S will pay. One thousand and ninety nine dollars and ninety nine cents, Kroger will make no payment, so the recommendation is to release them, and so we would need a. Vote from the board essentially approving, releasing and indemnifying Kroger from any responsibility in this suit as it relates to Ramsey County. Any questions, any decoding needed there?
But it should be done in a form of motion to allow uh myself to go ahead and sign off on that as a county's representative.
That is correct, Jeff, we we would need a vote of the board in order to release, uh, they were originally asking though to essentially. Make that decision, but he notified that he does not have that power and that is solely resting with the commission to do.
I'm going to go ahead with the recommendation from the state's attorney's office to.
A motion and a second that we go ahead and release Kroger from the lawsuit as based on recommendations from state's attorney and legal representative. Legal representatives. Ashwadi Law Group. So, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose same sign, motion carries. Anything else, Daniel?
Nothing further from the state's attorney's office.
Okay, appreciated. Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, bringing up to the next item on the agenda would be the twenty twenty-three budget amendments. We received budget amendments from Candy for twenty twenty-three operating year. Kevin, can you refresh my memory for the blacktop? Uh, that was not spent last year. Gotcha.
I think the comment I have with, with this amendment is looking at the percent that's being unused. I'm not so sure we would be more prudent in future budgets to tighten that up a little bit.
Have these, uh, underspent budgets been consistent over the years? People, departments budgeting more money than necessary? Uh, and so as we move into budget season is what you're thinking, Bill? Hey, and I didn't know, Commissioner Hodis and I had a, this conversation about why some of this does happen. And a lot of times it's some of our larger departments, uh, Highway Sheriff's Department. And it's, uh, lost the staff mid-year and the staff becomes, you know, works out to be a lot of, uh, money left over sometimes if those positions can't be filled. Um, you know, you take, uh, the tax office, it's just Beth in there has been for probably close to six months I think since Christie has had left in. So she's gonna be certainly under budget, um, significantly just with that one staff individual that they've had, uh, problems filling. So those are some of the issues with the expenditures not being spent and budgeted for. But, um, I think Bill hits nail on the head if we can tighten up some of these, um, budgets if we're not gonna spend them all or, or, um, if there's significant carryover consistently in various departments, maybe we need to shore that up. And so we're not asking taxpayers to fund something that we're not spending.
Yeah, see if we could tighten that up some. If it doesn't help the taxpayers for a request.
Yep.
And I take away from salary adjustments.
The majority of this, uh, carryover comes back to general, correct Candy? Doesn't go back to that individual department? In the top portion. So it's beneficial for those departments to budget tightly and spend within their budgets and those kind of things as we move forward. But for this, I think it looks really good. We basically underspent our budget. We had carryover left over.
But some of this, like this period off and stuff, that's gonna get spent this year. So I mean, that's it's, you know, I mean, that you know, that's gonna take three hundred thousand off that number.
Right.
Right. In your budget. I mean, so technically you're gonna be over spent this year because it was no, because you took that into account. So so last year it's gonna look at. Um, and the snow down as well. I mean, that was, you know, money that.
If you take those two items. They're not that much different spots.
No.
No.
Really? That's the way you're looking at it?
Yeah. I still agree that it should be.
Yeah.
But they, you know, there's, there's state funds that got dropped into that budget. Right, because if you that we couldn't couldn't go to the period off fund, you couldn't take that into your budget last year because you weren't sure you weren't gonna get it. It showed up, so.
Cause if you take those two items out and you take the wages that were not paid out, such as baths and yours, when you were down three guys, that were four guys. You start figuring out the, I bet you that's close to a hundred thousand dollars. If you figure four months and then you figure her six months, you know, which that's justifiable. Yeah. Justify that when they go back.
Yep.
I mean, here because you're not doing without it. You were at that time, but you're not getting up in the following year. I mean, it's a question was asked how they just, just get so far out of whack. You know, I think the justification is that.
Well, and really it's not overly out of whack. It's within ten percent.
Yeah.
Um, it's so out of a, a five point two million dollar, uh, budget, you know, from general funds. Um, five hundred and forty thousand, forty-three thousand left, left over. So that's some really good budgeting from our departments. And had you been fully staffed and you've been fully staffed the entire year, that would have been really, really close to being a so. Salaries and benefits add up in a hurry. So. But good job with, uh, the budget amendments, Candy.
Yeah, when you see the numbers like this.
Now.
A lot more sense. And you could take the numbers like Lee just said, and you can figure it out in your head all fast. Where the numbers go. And I think that's what you're saying too, right?
It just seems like that we can tighten this up a little bit.
Yep.
I'm going to accept the amendment, but it's twenty-three.
Second. Okay. Motion and a second to go ahead and approve the budget amendments for twenty twenty-three. Further discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Yes, sir.
Aye. Aye.
Otis.
Aye.
Aye. Budget amendments are approved. So. Thank you Candy for the hard work there and the department heads and everybody that put that effort in. So not an overabundance of red numbers on that spreadsheet. So. Good job, everybody. Uh, any other new business? Visitors and delegations. Very good. Portfolio announcements.
Fairmore got some good news from the city. I believe it was last minute there. It was recommended by the city administrator that five thousand for five years, twenty-five, twenty-five thousand for five years for the building. Um, there's a couple of uh, farmers again. Uh, it's gonna, as soon as project starts to pledge thirty thousand, so there's some substantial donations coming to that. The planning, zoning. Those are two of like ten for month, those proposals.
See, my first party already have raised already.
Uh, last, um, number I seen with the counties was one point six. We've got to be close to that second million dollars now because they've had some.
Hey, cause the question gets asked and I, you know, just like anyone else, I keep.
It's, it's gotta be close to two million. I don't know how close, but there's been some.
Which is great.
Yeah. You know, there's, there's been some pledges for over the years and I don't think that she's taking those, you know.
They're, they're definitely gonna be able to match what we said, which is the huge thing.
And there's, there's some other grants that they're reapplying for, so.
Lot of positives out there for that fair board.
Yep.
Yeah. So.
I'm going to advance the discussion, cement or no cement? I think I couldn't make the last meeting. I was out of town, um. That has gone up so much that we don't know if we're gonna be able to do the cement right away. So just, just because of the cost from them, don't know because. But it's still, as far as I know, still on the table.
Commissioner Wollhomy.
I'm in the superintendent's office, uh, the, and work is solution. So that's probably not going as quickly as most parties would like it to, but I think it's April, there's a meeting set for.
April ninth at five thirty in the auditorium. Anything else? That's the only. Uh, I don't have a, a whole lot to add, um. The jail continues to plug along and average, I don't know, a little over fifty inmates a day. Um, we'd like to see those numbers, obviously a little higher from our outside entities, but, um, can't force people to stay there and, but I think it's going good.
To the black.
It's in the black, so. And, uh, airport rollout, some good exciting news coming up here later on, probably this month. Uh, stay tuned for that and, um. Yeah. We, we certainly could, um, long range, uh, building committee for the Law Enforcement Center. We had a meeting put together by, uh, Sheriff Lang, other, uh, and law enforcement officials from across the area. I mean, counter county, trail county, uh, the counties that are involved currently in the LEC. Uh, Ben Semetti, Nelson, we're all representative, uh, represented there, uh, Walsh County is there. Cavalier County. Um, and, uh, you, you know, it probably no secret that the LEC board is, um, authorized a feasibility study for the potential of a new facility. And how that facility looks or where it's gonna be located is yet to be determined. But the initial steps are in place to start investigating that, uh, with the firm out of Indiana. With a feasibility study, uh, on that. Yeah. Uh, for those that think that the jail is only fifty years old, it should last another fifty. Um, I would invite them to go in, take a tour of that, we've given tours of the facility and, um, just pointing out how the business of corrections has changed over the past five decades, uh, dramatically changed how it's staffed. Um, how, uh, inmates are housed, different things like that. We can operate a, a bigger jail more efficiently with the same number or maybe even reduced number of staff. Um, based upon how that building is, is structured and inmates can be observed, uh, kind of thing. So, um, we're looking at, we'll be looking at a, a lot of state and federal help with, uh, some funding opportunities, hopefully, and because any building that you put together is not cheap. But, um, you know, the expense of transporting inmates to other jurisdictions would be astronomical. So, and I, I think it's imperative that we start planning for this process now instead of when, when the time comes and they wait until they shut us down because of building facility that doesn't meet the criteria set forth by the state or federal governments. So we will continue pursuing that. So. Well, it sounds like they're moving forward with their project. It's gonna be a smaller, uh, facility. And right now I think they're limited to about sixteen in that community. But, you know, if you take a look at Ramsey County's daily, uh, population, we average about thirty-seven inmates a day. So a fifty-bed facility went to do justice, it would be basically our expense alone. And we'd have no room for anybody else's, um, inmates. And that's kind of where we we can make some money is outside contracts, whether it be, um, contracts with counties throughout the state, the state D O C R or the Federal Bureau of Prisons, um. So a lot of moving parts within operation of a jail and um, hopefully it's moving forward. So. Anything else you wanted to mention on that, Brad?
No, I just think it's some of the counties and some of the people. Which is the reason of our facility. Facility, so. But what you're saying, thank you. A lot of jails getting close to the, the, the.
So. Stay tuned. Bill, anything?
Nope.
Lane?
Um, public health is plugging along. Some grants, we lost some grants, gained some grants. We didn't receive the COVID shot from the state like before where it was free. So that's some cost there. That was some ups and downs. But other than that, plugging along, I wasn't able to get to the, like access, but I know they're doing all right because the snow was not there, so we don't have a lot of overheads as far as pushing snow this year. Other than that, and nine one one was good. But I don't have anything else.
All right. Any other announcements? Can't be anything. I'm gonna talk about, uh, petitions for commissioners deadlines.
Um, for those that are wanting to, um, do petitions, if you'd like to run again, just let me know.
And the deadline for petitions to be turned in is something, something.
Yeah. Four o'clock.
Be like Tuesday the ninth or something.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's what it is. Yeah, yeah. I think that's what it is.
Right around the corner.
Yeah, eighty-five signatures.
I think there's three, uh, positions open on the commission for reelection this term.
Yep.
So. Get your petitions out there, get the signatures on there and, uh, hey, if you plan on running, you always get more than signatures than needed. Because they will kick some out because they're either ineligible or, um, don't qualify for some particular reason. But just wanted to put that out there for a reminder for everybody and with that, I'm leaving the jury.